Twenty twenty one, we will have an invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance. Father Huffman is here from Saint Joe, Saint Lawrence and Saint Mary's. I get them all, Father?
You got them. How about it?
Okay. In the name of the Father and of a Son and of the Holy Spirit. Lord God, we thank you that we are privileged to live in this great nation of ours where we can enjoy life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. We ask it as the whole world is filled with your glory that we commend our country, our cities, to your authority, to your guidance. Help us to remember that all who are in authority are to serve you, our Creator and Redeemer. We ask you to be with us in all that we discuss and deliberate, that our decisions may be according to your will. We ask you to bless us and all that we undertake, especially those that challenge us most for our good to give back to you in accordance to what you have given to us. We ask your blessings, your guidance, your care, your protection as we continue on hopefully in healthier times. We pray all things through Christ our Lord. In the name of the Father and of a Son and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father Huffman.
You're welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Claire.
Here.
Amy.
Here.
Arby.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
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 Chris.
Here.
Next in our agenda, we have the approval of meeting minutes for the Public Utilities Committee meeting of May nineteenth, twenty twenty one, the Public Utilities Committee meeting of June tenth, twenty twenty one, the Finance Committee meeting minutes of June tenth, twenty twenty one, and the regular council meeting minutes of June tenth, twenty twenty one. Are there any errors, omissions, additions to those minutes? No, I was in that one. Hearing none, those meeting minutes will stand as approved. Next is audience participation. The council members would like to share with any residential concerns that they may have been brought to their attention the last couple of weeks. John, I know you had something, you said you wanted to present audience participation.
Yes. John Eland, Finance Director. This deals with legislation that has been approved for the purchase of police vehicles. In going through the process, we have found out that, and I had subsequently sent people email with that, that the bank that we had anticipated to finance with weren't able to do a lease option. That reduces us to one of two options to pursue the purchase. One of them is to go ahead and bond it out. The other one is to advance funds from the General Fund to the Police Equipment Replacement Fund for the purchase of these vehicles. The bond rate through the Lawrence County Auditor's Office for five years is two point two five percent, which is what we were hoping to obtain with a financing option through a bank that wasn't able to do that. It's about a sixteen hundred dollar expense in addition to that for bond counsel. But I probably know, I do think that that is the way to go, is to do another bond. I know that there have been differing opinions on that. But I think possibly the smartest thing to do is to go ahead and get the bond. If that fund is healthy enough to pay that off earlier than the bond term date of five years, I would be in favor of that also.
And I'd specifically ask you, my follow-up to that was, is there any early payment penalty?
I would not have been able to find out. If there's not, then we could go ahead and run it on out. That is the way that we had anticipated. That for the next five years anyway is to go ahead and make payments on that. And I will find out the answer. But I wanted to get council's input on, for future legislation, hopefully for the next meeting, if they would agree with the bond financing as opposed to financing it ourselves from the General Fund as an advance to the Police Equipment Replacement Fund. Bob?
Yeah, I totally agree with what's going on with bond. We talked about getting it out, taking it out of the General Fund and just paying it. But I felt like if it bonded out, you've got a line item that bond issue with it, and you've got payments to be made to it. So it will always, it will always balance out where it's supposed to be. If we took out the General Fund and then tried to track the money back into the General Fund for it, I think it could get lost in the shop. I thought having bonded would be the best way. That way, they have their options, and they've got donations or however they get their money in the police department. You've got a line item and a plan to do it.
So I totally agree with what you're saying.
Nate?
About two point two five percent, how much interest payment would that be over five years, or a couple of months, or a year?
I ran that amortization schedule, Nate, and I didn't bring it with me. Hundred and forty thousand, two point two five. I can text it to you here in just a minute.
Okay, sounds good. And then what, how does that affect our bond debt capacity?
I asked that to Brenda Weimer, and she said that we are still fully functional. Of course, it's going to reduce it a hundred and forty thousand, but she said that we would still be in good shape.
Do you not feel comfortable if it was an advance, not being able to make that payment over five years back to the General Fund?
No, I think that-
Like having a line item and having an advanced repayment?
I think that we'll be able to make that. Once again, I I look at things conservatively, and probably the most conservative is to say, hey, if we can go ahead and fund this at zero percent interest, yeah, of course, that would be the way to go. But I'm also thinking, well, what if something happens? We know that the Police Equipment Replacement Fund generates enough money, still maintains their incentive to go ahead and let's do the auctions and maintain our tow-in and storage because we have a debt obligation.
Well, what if that, what if something happens? I mean, we're still going to have to meet that, that obligation whether it comes from-
Yes.
You know, whatever, so-
Yeah. So you're exactly right on that. I mean, there's going to be a debt obligation either way. It's whether, whether the Police Equipment Replacement Fund pays back the General Fund or the Police Equipment Replacement Fund pays back the bond. And I think in my conservative view, that once again, if it ends up to where we can make payments quicker, and once again, that is due to the tow-in and storage and how successful the auto auctions are, et cetera, that we go ahead and pay the bond off quicker if allowed. But once, once again, you know, that's, that's going to be council's call on there.
Now, tell me about the process for the, for the bonding. How, because this, we started this process a while ago, how much further is this going to push it back as far as-
Probably two weeks. I would say that she would have the legislation on here within two weeks at our next meeting.
And how about the funds being available with the Treasurer's Office and then purchase?
When we had gone through the bonding procedure before with the Lawrence County Auditor, we were able to get monies quickly. Before I started delving into a lot of these answers, I wanted to see which direction that we wanted to go, or that council wanted to go. So that was, I'm just, I'm kind of looking at it of, well, it's a police vehicle, Police Equipment Replacement Fund. That's just, that's just how my, my theory works. But I do understand the advance.
Yeah. Okay.
Nate, that's thirty one hundred and fifty dollars, just that five.
Thirty one hundred and fifty, so that'd be forty seven, five thousand bucks.
And-
Pay an additional, additional five thousand dollars and have to lay a little longer.
And the reason I, the reason I ask about the early payment is, you know, I, I don't, I don't think you lose anything by, I don't think you lose anything by bonding it. And if we have it, there is no worst-case scenario, then we pay it off. You're really getting a whole lot less than, I mean, you're paying nickels for borrowing the, the money for it instead of, you know, doing it out of, advancing it out of the General Fund. But I'm okay either way. Mike?
I was wondering, it's three vehicles, is that correct?
Yes.
And what's the initial cost of those three vehicles?
It was slightly under a hundred and forty thousand dollars, around a hundred and twenty thousand something, but then-
One twenty nine something.
And that provided the additional funds to specialize them, you know, to decal, et cetera, et cetera. Bob?
John, I'd get to look in the base, but what's in that fund currently today?
I will tell you what's in the fund at the end of May. I normally try to bring a detailed trial balance, but I'm kind of out of practice from- From being out of here for a year.
Unless you spend a lot of money this month.
I'm sorry?
Unless you spend a lot of money in, in June.
At the end of May, there's thirty two thousand that is unencumbered.
Is that thirty two thousand, we'll just keep growing with the options?
Yes, that's-
If we're payments due, you're already thirty two thousand ahead today.
Yes.
Or at the end of May, I should say.
We have made our payments already for the existing police vehicles. I think they have one more year on them. So, so within two years, that fund ought to, ought to have a substantially higher balance in it than it does right now. And once again, you're only looking at five months. It's, I'd, I'd say we're going to end up with pretty good balance in that fund this year.
Pam?
In that balance, don't we still have fifty thousand dollars encumbered for our new vehicle before we start going in this direction, John?
There is fifty thousand dollars budgeted for a vehicle.
So, if I could lay it again, it would be like eighty some thousand dollars.
Chris?
Is the retirement noted in, in this, the paperwork?
That we have made on the ones that have, were purchased three years ago.
And that will be paid off-
Next year.
Next year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that all you had?
Yes, it is.
Nate?
As we know, we can take the capital straw the whole one direction if you want to go because maybe there's two, there's two different directions that require legislation.
Yeah.
I don't know, but we need to double up on the legislation as part of-
Agreed. Agreed.
So.
Craig?
I, yes.
I just want to point out to you, this is a process that we started several months ago, you know. As of right now, we're all right on our figures on what we've agreed on the purchase of these vehicles. I'm not trying to hurry council or anything like that, but if we end up rolling over into the twenty twenty two cycle for these vehicles, there may be an extra expense per vehicle and per equipment on that, just making council aware of that.
I don't think it's a, it's, it's not a matter of, of purchase if, Pam, it's, it's just-
I understand, it's just-
Where, where it's coming from.
I, I understand that.
Bob clearly has a preference and Nate clearly has a preference.
I agree with him.
I'd like, I think you stated, Craig, I don't really see a problem with either, but just, you know, a small conversation here. If we've got fifty thousand already allotted for expenditure and thirty two thousand, I mean, can we just take that, put it towards it, and then take the rest out of the General Fund like we had on the legislation and then pay it back?
We, we can certainly do either.
I don't know if that'd be easier or not, but-
That's, that's what the straw poll was about.
I think that sounds good.
Mike? So I think you have your preference there, John.
I think it is to advance it from the General Fund.
Yep.
The remainder.
Nate?
John, and I know we've talked, we've had a couple of other advances. I would like to have on the back of the financials, a detail of those advances and, and repayment, you know, payment tracking of those or something, some sort of scheduled payment.
Well, as can you shall receive on page thirty six, at the very bottom underneath that bold black line are the three advances right now that we have.
Okay. Well, I just kind of wanted, to Bob's point, I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not losing track of what's what, and that's, those will be repaid.
And those will be reported on every financial statement that you've received.
Perfect.
That it's not the Trails Project?
Right. The Trails Project.
Mike?
Craig, that was to take the fifty thousand that's already allocated towards the vehicle, utilize that, and then the remainder coming from the General Fund.
Plus the thirty two thousand that we have there? Yes. And then an advance from the General Fund?
Correct.
Yes.
So that's going to be in my settlement.
It won't be the full thirty two thousand because there's other expenses budgeted-
Okay.
In there. So whatever the maximum that we can take out, we will take out and apply it from the Police Equipment Replacement Fund, transfer on a budget amendment from the General Fund to the Police Equipment Replacement Fund, and she's good to go tomorrow.
Okay. Noted. Chris?
What do you need left in there? Do you know what kind of power? Let's see, she has money left for capital expenditures and then operating expenses. And, and a lot of times what I see coming out of operating expenses are badges, hats, bullets, gun belts, that type of stuff. Sometimes there's even operating expenses for the repair of some of these vehicles that are going to be replaced.
Would you say twelve thousand would be too much or too little, or I-
I'm hoping it's going to be right on the line.
So if we can put twenty towards it, fifty and then twenty towards it out of that, then we'd be fine, twenty, seventy, or-
About half.
Half, would be advancing seventy?
I'd say that, uh, I'd say probably closer to a hundred advancing. Because her capital expenditures, she will end up using those on purchasing capital items. There's been seventeen hundred dollars in vehicle purchase, and I think that that's probably to repair a vehicle or something. I'd have to pull the detail on it. Operating expenses, she's got about all of that spent. If you look at, at that number on through there, then yes, she's pretty much got all of that, all of that spent already. And then the retirement of the indebtedness, we've spent that. So, so as I say, we will pull the maximum out to still allow her to continue function through the end of the year, do the advance from the General Fund to the Police Equipment Replacement. Thank you. You're welcome.
Mayor, did you have something to add?
Yeah, also, just to make council aware, there'll be a, we'll be waiting on those vehicles like we were last year, it was almost a year.
It was a long time.
Nine months. Those funds are not drawn down until we take delivery of those vehicles, if that purchase order is issued and that number is given. So by this time next year, we may have those vehicles and we may not. But we're on the waiting list, so there's nothing we can do about that, so just.
So we'll transfer that amount for the whole encumbrance for the purchase process of vehicles. And then with the money that she generates over the next seven months, we might not have to pull all of it out.
Mayor?
Keep it minimal.
Do you want to address council?
Yeah.
I'm just going to, I have some updates, but I want to provide some information and stuff now. I can do that miscellaneous.
Now's fine.
Okay. Well, it's going to be a lot then. I, I don't know if everyone's checked your emails, seen what's going on, what the state's doing right now with their legislation. I know I copied everyone on some information I put out to the media today, well, late last night. I've been on the phone all day long with people all over the state, the county, the districts. Having them call our representatives and our senators to tell them what they're doing is killing, going to kill our communities. Just to give you some information, Senate Bill one eleven, they made an adjustment to it, to, which is the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, which we were to be allocated two million dollars over two years. The new revision, they decided they could provide it to townships now, and I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that, but the way they're going to fund these townships now is by cutting us all in half. So Ironton losing one million dollars in federal funding by doing that, Coal Grove losing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, South Point four hundred thousand, and it just goes on. Portsmouth losing close to two million, I'd be very upset about that too, if I were them. What I'm asking is that everyone, all hands, we have to stop it from happening. We got to keep it from happening. Best thing you can do to help out is call these people, tell them what it's going to do, you know. Some of these communities have already spent their money, so now that it just got cut in half, where do you think they're going to make up for that half that they did, they already spent? It's going to come out of their citizens' pockets. These people need to know that at the state. I'm not going to give up on it. I'm going as far as I can with it. I know Nate, you made some calls today too. I encourage everybody to call them, and I will provide you their phone numbers right now. Bob Peterson, actually, and I want to include that our two senators from Lawrence County sponsored this bill, by the way. Bob Peterson, six one four, four six six, eight one five six.
Four six six, eight one five six.
Yep. Terry Johnson, six one four, four six six, eight zero eight two.
Just say a little more, John.
Six one four, four six six, eight zero eight two.
Matt Johnson.
Yep. Jason Stevens, seven four zero, seven four four, seven three seven seven. Brian Baldridge, five one three, five two zero, nine seven seven nine.
Five two zero, five seven seven nine.
Nine seven seven nine. And our two reps sat on the House Committee, they passed it through, so. And our two reps sat on the House committee, they passed it through, so... I, I'm sure you guys are just as upset as I am, and I think all of our residents should be upset that our representatives are not representing our best interest. So I think they need to be heard, you know, know what's going on.
Sam, I know it's just a token gesture, but it's really all this body has to offer besides individually placing calls, which I would encourage all the members here to do, but we can also draft a resolution that you can, that you can forward on to the, to the representatives, to the senators, that is, that is worded, that, um, Senate Bill 111, Senate Bill 111 is, uh, is, goes against the City of Ironton's interests. Something along those lines of, um, people like Mac and Brigham that are much more clever with penmanship can draft that strongly worded resolution from this body, and you can pass that along to the State House. I mean, that's all we can really do as a, as a legislative body, but I'd be happy to sponsor that. I think, I think it'll be short sighted if we didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, like I said, it's the best thing we can do for our communities, fight for that money, and, you know, I just feel for all the communities that have already, you know, spent, you know, because we were told we were getting it. We didn't know that could change, and I don't believe it should change or that it can change, so I think they need to fix it. This is where, you know, their leadership, you know, will show itself, so. On to some better news. The LMI survey is being sent out for the third time. I know, I don't know if you guys got a lot of phone calls last time, you know, residents receiving, hey, we want an income survey. So this income survey is to help us receive CDBG dollars in these parts of town, so it's very important that we get four hundred surveys, we, I think we had received a hundred and eighty-nine through the first two. We have to send out the third to the same group again, then we can start a new list if we do not receive the four hundred. But if anyone gives you any calls about that, you know, just let them know, hey, this is for, you know, any type of critical infrastructure projects that your community, your part of the community could qualify for. So we are resur surveying all of the areas that qualify to be resur surveyed. Some parts of town, there's, we cannot resurvey for. IBI has obtained the maps from the county engineer to move forward in reworking our zoning maps with Susan, so we'll have something better to look at electronically. And they are also putting plans together now for the water plant upgrades, which is the filter media replacement. That will be completed with the existing water plant bond funds that we need to close out as soon as possible, so. Any questions on anything? Chris?
Uh, they did update us on the, uh, the construction on that, the street park.
Yeah, they started getting the fences down yesterday, the, it has been, the bid has been awarded now in something I definitely want to make you aware of. So we actually, originally it was fifty thousand dollars to resurface the pickleball courts that will go where the tennis courts are and the basketball courts. We've actually received an extra close to ninety to a hundred thousand dollars in CDBG money left over that the county allocated to us, that I think it was left over from the Coal Grove Water Project. And they either had to send it back or allocate it to another, so this was the project that was ready. So now we're looking at, you know, four, five, you know, benches to put around the park, couple, four or five picnic tables, water fountain, and a few other improvements there, along with fencing. It's, it's a lot of things, so, but all it took for us to get the whole entire thing done, we needed to put it forward, you know, the eleven thousand matching to do the hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollar project. So I plan to do that out of, you know, our community development fund, which has some money allocated into it already. Do you have any questions on it?
No, I just, I was able to meet with Rep. today and check out what's been done. It, it doesn't look like it, but now the fence is taken down and everything like that, it's, it's a, it's a large area. You don't really notice it driving by, but it's going to be...
Yeah.
Pretty nice.
It'll be a really nice park when it's finished. Any other updates you guys would like to hear? Thank you, all right.
Call those state representatives.
Moving on to communications, there are none, reports, there are none, ordinances. Bob?
Yep, before we read ordinance twenty-one thirty-eight, it needs to be amended in the body of the ordinance. Section one, we looked at, says that there is a right place to notice a bid in newspaper of Gerald circulation for an easement lease agreement for a fifty-year term. And at this point is where we're going to amend it, we're going to say, and it's getting, it's authorizing to accept the highest and best bid. Normally, I think that's in the body of what we, very beginning, we read it.
It was in the title that we left that.
Yeah. Yes, yeah, then the title is, we left it out of section one. He left it out of section one, back, back there.
We're highest and best.
Yes.
Including you.
Highest.
They need to meet a lot of...
Yeah, highest and best, you know. So moved. Nate? Any discussion about that? Roll call.
Cleary?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
If the clerk could please give amended ordinance twenty-one thirty-eight first reading by title only.
Authorizing the mayor to submit for bid and accept the highest and best bid for the cellular power owned by the City of Ironton, Ohio, declaring emergency second reading.
Chris?
Make a motion to suspend rules and give us second, third reading by title only.
Bob?
Second, third, push.
Jacob, did you have something?
I was just gonna second.
Roll call, please.
Cleary?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Pop?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
If the clerk could please give ordinance, amended ordinance twenty-one thirty-eight, second and third reading by title only.
Authorizing the mayor to submit for bid and accept the highest and best bid for cellular, cellular power owned by the City of Ironton, Ohio, declaring emergency second reading. Authorizing the mayor to submit for bid and accept the highest and best bid for cellular power owned by the City of Ironton, Ohio, declaring emergency third reading.
Bob?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-one thirty-eight.
Jacob?
I'll second that motion.
Did you have something, Mike?
I'll say it.
Okay. Discussion on that at all? Think we discussed that at?
Probably on...
We discussed that at Public Utilities.
Yeah, or a motion, probably should say as amended.
So moved? So seconded? Roll call, please.
Cleary?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Pop?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Amended ordinance twenty-one thirty-eight is adopted. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-one thirty-nine first reading by title only.
Establishing an animal control officer repealing and replacing chapter six-one-eight point one-seven of the codified ordinances to the City of Ironton and declaring emergency first reading.
Bob?
Make a motion to suspend rules on ordinance twenty-one thirty-nine and give it second, third reading by title only.
Beth?
I'll second.
That discussion, this is the first dominated before the cat ordinance. For those, we did a nuisance workshop with multiple things that the residents have complained about, feral cats being one of them, and we needed to change the language in that health section to make it animal control officer rather than just strictly dog warden, just for clarification for everyone.
Roll call, please.
Cleary?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Pop?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-one thirty-nine second and third reading by title only.
Establishing an animal control officer repealing and replacing chapter six-one-eight point one-seven of the codified ordinances to the City of Ironton and declaring emergency second reading. Establishing an animal control officer repealing and replacing chapter six-one-eight point one-seven of the codified ordinances to the City of Ironton, declaring emergency third reading.
Bob?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty-one thirty-nine.
Beth?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Cleary?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Pop?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-one thirty-nine is adopted. If the clerk could please give ordinance twenty-one thirty-five second reading by title only.
Establishing water rates for residential and commercial water users for the City of Ironton, Ohio, declaring an emergency second reading.
Bob, we had a utility bill workshop last night, and we discussed how, um, on the third reading of this, I'll be on vacation, and I asked Mac tonight about, um, about if, will you guys give that third reading while I'm on vacation? If you could table it and we could vote on it the next meeting, so, for two reasons. One, so that I'm present since I sponsored it, and two, it gives us more time to discuss the utility bill and what that looks like, the take and give. We had some really good discussions that started last night, so, um, anyway, it's been very fruitful, just to update.
Thank you. Table it now. Someone can make a motion to table this now. It wouldn't be given a third reading till it's brought off the table.
I'll second, do what we have to, what we have to.
Have to be brought in the next meeting. No, that's what we were told last time.
No, not for, not when you table it, so.
Yeah, well, last time, they said it has to be read at the next meeting, that's Robert's rules.
I just read Robert's rules.
I, that's what you guys told us last time, yeah.
What, was that on a table?
That was on the bed tax, for his table. Then the bed tax was tabled a long time ago, they tried to untable it here, they said that you couldn't because it has to be brought up at the next meeting.
I, I just read Robert's rule, orders, there's no timeline on taking it off the table. And there's nothing, I looked at the charter, there's nothing in the charter that says it has to be at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's what Brigham was referring to, Robert's rules last time, and I thought that's what it read. Am I the only one that said?
No, I recall that.
Army, I also.
Well, regardless, we have a motion seconded, so we're all happy.
I want to go with legal counsel there.
Any other discussion?
Wait, if you have, I'd wait to table whatever. I would table it before it's given the third reading, though. You see what I'm saying?
Sure.
So you can, we can set up a third reading next meeting, table before it's given that reading, and then at the next meeting, take it off the table, give it the third reading, though. And then it's done within one meeting, and when you table it.
You want to remove my motion?
No, Bob made the motion, I think you seconded it.
Was it? It's up to you, if you want to rescind it.
If there's some question, then it has to be the next meeting, I don't see that, but that way you'd be doing it at the next meeting, and then there'd be no question about it.
Beth?
I can remove my motion.
Come right off, do we have a question?
Okay, any other?
Remember at the next meeting, when it, before it's given the third reading, someone make a motion to table it.
You're tasked with that.
After that, you can bring it off the table, give it a third reading, and vote on it. Okay, can I motion you made after, just after the second reading right now? Well, that's what we talked about done, but if you do a meeting, you can bring it off the table, someone's thinking it has to be brought off at the next meeting. I don't see that, but if we do it the other way, then we're safe either way, so you'd be doing it at the next. I'm just kind of concerned if there's other, other council members that may miss the next meeting. And if I'm getting a second reading correct, so... It's been given second reading today. So if we take it off the table, it'll be given third reading no matter what, correct? If it's... If it's... Four people take it off the table? If it's right now, or if it's at the beginning of the next meeting, right?
Four people have taken it.
No, I just, I mean, it takes four votes at the next meeting to table it.
If, if you don't say anything, you can table it right now, I would, I'd go ahead and, you know, I want to trust you.
Pass the precedent, it's what you're here for.
Right. Because what if, you know, like Mac said, what if, what if?
I have no preference.
I'll make another question and table it.
Chris? Roll call, please.
Cleary?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Harvey?
Aye.
Pop?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-one thirty-five is tabled. Moving on to resolutions, there are none, miscellaneous. Jacob?
Executive session, should I make a motion?
Does anybody else have anything for Jacob? Nope. Go ahead. Make, yeah, make your motion there for...
Yeah, make a motion to go to the executive session with council, mayor, solicitor.
Finance director, or not?
Finance director and...
What's the purpose?
Okay, yeah, pending legislation.
Pending litigation?
Yes.
With no action to follow?
With no action, well, I'm wrestled by it.
So, so move. Chris, Chris seconds. Thank you, Father, roll call, please.
Thank you.
Bob?
Cleary?
Aye. You a, you aye?
Harvey?
Aye.
Pop?
Aye.
Klein?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Thank you.